Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Enlarge City School District of Middletown's Board of Education meeting for Thursday, April 24th, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting to order in a reminder that this agenda was prepared in advance of tonight's meeting. The final agenda for tonight's meeting is subject to change at the time of the meeting. Any changes will be noted at the time they are made and again after the meeting on the public board minutes, which are available on the district's website. And we'll have it in Spanish by our student rep, Norma, with the ice bag.
Esta agenda fue preparada antes de la reunión de esta noche. La agenda final para la reunión de esta noche sujeta a cambios en el momento de la reunión. Cualquier cambio se anotará el momento que se reáirse. Y nuevamente después de la reunión, las actuales de la junta pública que están disponibles en el sitio del distrito.
We'd like to remind everyone that translation and interpretation services are also available during the meeting, and if you need immediate assistance, please let us know, and we'll be happy to accommodate you.
Nosotros gustaría recordar todo que los servicios de traducción y interpretación están disponibles de enterrar en esta reunión. Si necesitan asistencia, por favor informanos y con gusto lo ayudamos.
At this time, if you could please stand and remove your hats, face the flag for our pledge of allegiance, which will be followed by a moment of silence by Mr. Perino, and then our Enlarge City School District mission statement. And Ms. Tobiasin will have both the pledge and our mission statement.
Moments of silence this evening, the first moment of silence is for Pope Francis. You don't have to be Catholic to realize that Pope Francis was a great humanitarian. He fought for the downtrodden, very ecumenical in his beliefs, a person that moved religion, his religious faith, and all others down the road. The second moment of silence this evening, President Trump has proclaimed April 20th to the 27th Holocaust Remembrance Days. Holocaust Remembrance remembers the Jews, 6 million, who lost their lives during World War II, along with many other groups such as Slavic people, such as gay people, Jehovah Witnesses, and so on. It's something that must never happen again, and I'm sure our instructional staff makes mention of this and assigns papers on this in their classes in Middletown High School and in our middle schools. So please remember everyone mentioned in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Ms. Tobiasin, our mission statement.
The mission of the Enlarge City School District of Middletown: We strive to provide physically sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously support our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to become competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you, Ms. Tobiasin. Roll call, Mrs. Monchery.
Mr. Estrada.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Perino.
Yeah.
Mr. Rett.
Yeah.
Ms. Romero.
Mr. Tobiasin.
Here.
Mr. Freddie Williams.
Pastor Williams.
Yep.
Mr. Mitchell Williams.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I need approval for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Pastor Williams, seconded by Ms. Tobiasin. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need a motion for the approval of the regular meeting minutes from April 10th, 2025.
So moved.
Moved by Pastor Williams, seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. And now I'm going to hand it off to our superintendent and Mr. Tuttle for our budget recap.
Good evening, President Estrada, members of the board and community. Tonight, after several weeks of presenting budget information, we're here for the final review of the budget and the budget adoption by the board for tonight. So what we're looking at by law, we have to present a three-part budget, an administrative component, a program, which is instruction, and a capital. So as you can see, right now, our administrative budget will be 32 million point seven. Our program is a little bit over 201 million, and our capital will be a little bit over $42 million this year. So we're looking at an overall budget increase from year to year of 5.23 percent. That usually trends about average of what we've been doing every year, based on a whole This year, last week, two weeks ago, we presented the budget and the tax levy. We came out, we were at 2.9, and unfortunately, the legislators and the governor have not produced state budget yet, so we don't know what our final revenues will be. So we had to go back in and look at some budget cuts, which wouldn't be too detrimental to the system, and so we're looking at a 1.99 percent increase over last year's tax levy. So it's about $1.4 million on the tax levy. If you look at previous years, back five, we've been at zero. We actually decreased the tax levy 5 million. We've been at zero, and then we've been at one. So right now, we're looking at 1.99. Just a recap of what the overall budget looks like. The proposed budget, 276,417 dollars, that's an increase of 13.7 million, and an overall budget increase of 5.23 percent. And our tax levy, again, is 1.4 million, with our tax levy increased at 1.99. So I just want to, I have a little asterisk there, just pointing out, that may not affect everyone, because the equalization rates will be adjusted. You may pay a little bit more increase or a little bit less, depending on what municipality that you live in. So just a little bit about the budget rules. So we have our budget on Tuesday, May 20th. Right now, we're under the 2 percent tax cap by law, so we need 50 percent plus one for the budget to pass. If that budget fails, we go to what they call a contingent budget, and then we go back to the levy that we had last year. And then there's the unfortunate part, there's no additional budget requests can be honored, no equipment can be purchased, except for health and safety, and then facilities will be, fees charged for the use of facilities. So we've never had a contingent budget since I've been in the district 19 years, so keep our streak going. So our community engagement, May 5th, we have Meet the Candidates Night right here in the media center at 7 o'clock. May 6th, we'll be over at City Hall, presenting the budget to the city council. And on May 12th, we'll have one last budget review right here in the media center at 6 o'clock. So really, just coming up, we have the budget hearing at our next meeting. That's by law. And then we have our budget vote and election on Tuesday, May 20th. And again, Meet the Candidates is Monday, May 5th, right here in the media center at 7:00 P.M. That's it. Anybody have questions?
So we'll go around for questions. We'll start off with Mr. Moore. Mr. Perino.
I want to compliment Mr. Tuttle on the administration, Mr. Creedon, excellent job on this budget. And just for the record, when we say we're under the 2 percent tax cap, that's a little misleading, is it not? Because there's, I believe, there's a 10-step process, and theoretically, the tax levy could have been what?
Right, over 4 million dollars.
Right.
Yeah, additional 4 million.
So we're way, way below that. Everyone would like to see no ta, 0 percent increase, but things go up, supplies go up, we purchase, contracts go up, on and on. So nice job on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Mr. Rett.
No questions. You guys kept us in touch with the budget throughout the whole process, so we're comfortable with it, and great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rett. Ms. Tobiasin.
I can only agree with the previous sentiments that have been expressed by fellow board members. Job well done.
Thank you, Ms. Tobiasin, Ms. Avila.
No, no questions. Thank you, though.
Thank you, Ms. Avila. Pastor Williams.
I don't really have any questions, but again, thank you for crafting, drafting this budget. Ms. Tuttle, you already talked about it, but the effects of what would happen if the budget doesn't pass and the contingency budget, I just want to reiterate to the public, the community that's here, something that you said was that we would have to charge for facility use. And currently, we have very open facilities with a lot of different programs, whether it be sports, whether it be Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, all kinds of different things that, because of the partnership with the community, that it's open for. But if for some reason, and I don't believe that, well, but if for some reason it was to go down and we had to go to a contingency plan, state law dictates that we would have to charge, so that wouldn't be on us at that stage, and we don't want that. So I just wanted to reiterate that for the public, so they get a good understanding sometimes of the fact that nothing that we do is arbitrary. There's a whole lot of stuff behind the scenes that sometimes we don't have control of. But thank you, guys, again, for putting together such a good budget. It's a good budget, and it's a good tax levy, because if you look at the previous years where we were at zero, at 1 percent, and then even when we gave back, what was it, 5.6 percent?
Yeah, 5 million.
$5 million, 6.9 percent, you know? And now, we're at 1.9, and Mr. Perino said it. Right now, all of us know, everything is going up. So that's a reasonable amount in comparison to the way everything is going. So good job, guys. Thank you.
Yeah, just to reiterate, we mentioned the 5 million decrease. We're still not at the level where we were before we went to the 5 million decrease, so we're doing okay.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. Mr. Freddie Williams.
No questions, just a comment. We want to thank you, Mr. Tuttle, for your continued service and such detailed explanations of what's going on, because I know there's a lot of moving parts, especially in today's time. So we just appreciate your time, energy, and effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Freddie Williams. Mr. Mitchell Williams, you good? Okay. So mine's just going to be a comment, and it's mostly to the folks sitting out in the audience, as well as those who will watch the meeting later on on MIDI TV, is that we need you guys to go to vote. Middletown, in general, on school budget votes, we don't show up. And, you know, we have about over 20,000 registered voters, I believe, in our jurisdiction, and every year for the school budget votes, we'll be lucky to get 800 people to come out and vote. And what that allows is that, you know, there are folks who, and I can't, we as a Board of Education can never tell you to go out and vote for something or against something. We can only just tell you to come out and vote. And it's important to have your voice heard, because when you don't, other people's voices get heard a lot louder. And what that puts into effect is everything that you see each and every day. You know, we have a vibrant community, we have great athletes, we have great individuals in chorus and in other music programs, as well as all of our students. Please come out on May 9th, experience our program night. We probably get about a few thousand people that come out to the high school and see demonstrations from our students, from the elementary schools to the middle schools to the high school, to see exactly what's going on in the district. You know, sometimes there's stuff out there that you get through social media. What I encourage you to do is to open up your mind, and if you ever have any doubt about what is going on inside our school buildings, please reach out to central administration or your local building administrator if you have questions about a specific school, and go out there, they'll give you the tour. We just had Mayor DiStefano here, as well as the new executive director for the Orange County Partnership, take a tour of the high school, and they left, you know, so impressed that they want to bring out the message of what's going on here in Middletown to the rest of the county. So our students are doing great things. We had a great graduation rate last year in excess of 90 percent. So what's working, what's going on now here is working, and our students are graduating, they're graduating on time, they're going to bigger and better schools, they're going on to bigger and better careers each and every year, thanks to our staff on the ground. And we look forward, with your support in May, to be able to continue that here at our level. So please, also, Meet the Candidates Night is that Monday. Again, we have three board seats up right now, Mr. Mitchell Williams' seat, Mr. Pastor Williams' seat, and Ms. Tobiasin's seats are up. So we'll have several candidates running for the school board as well. You can come out on that Monday or watch on MIDI TV to see what they have to say. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our action items for the night. I need approval for Personnel Memorandum 20A, number one.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rett, seconded by Pastor Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for personnel. Patencia, patience, my friends. We're going to get to why we're going to be celebrating what just happened, but yes, definitely a nice round of applause for our administrative appointments. Next up, I need a motion to approve Instructional Personnel Memorandum 20B, numbers one through six. Moved by Mr. Mitchell Williams, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? One abstention to a particular item in Personnel Memorandum, I think it was 20B-3? And I will be abstaining from that only because I know the individuals, so I don't want to create a conflict of interest. So the motion passes eight zero on all items, with the exception of 20B-3, which is 701 on the vote. I need a motion to approve Non-Instructional Personnel Memorandum 20C, numbers one through six. Moved by Mr. Mitchell Williams, seconded by Pastor Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for, and before I go on to the next one, now it's time to, I'm going to hand it off to Jillian at HR for some introductions and celebrations for some of our personnel appointees this evening.
Could I have Ms. Rivera Brott come up with Ms. Antoinette Thompson, please?
Good evening, esteemed members of the board, President Estrada, Superintendent Creedon, Assistant Superintendent Adoma, and Tuttle, and also some of the members of the cabinet team. It is with absolute pleasure and delight that I have the opportunity to introduce to you this evening, Ms. Antoinette Thompson, who will be joining our team here in Middletown as an Assistant Principal ENL, which is English as a New Language, case manager, to work very closely with our English language learners and providing them support, to work closely with our families, and also with our educators and staff. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce you to Mrs. Antoinette Thompson.
Thank you so much. It is an honor and a blessing to continue to serve here in Middletown, and now as an Assistant Principal ENL Case Manager. I look forward to working with our scholars, educators, and the community in this important role. Thank you. Gracias. Es un honor y bendición continuar a servir aquí en Middletown ahora y como una principal asistente para los estudiantes que aprenden inglés. Tengo emoción para trabajar con los estudiantes, los educadores, y la comunidad. Gracias.
Thank you. Good luck.
Now have Mr. David Coats come up with Mr. Justin Sturge.
Good evening.
And if Mr. Sturge speaks Spanish, then I'm going to be really impressed.
Very impressive, right? President Estrada, Superintendent Creedon, members of the board, cabinet, it is my distinct pleasure and honor to introduce Justin Sturge as our new Assistant Athletic Director, and I really have to thank everybody at the board, because we went on this journey about two years ago with the inception and trying to do the search. And we went through many, many candidates across the state of New York and tri-county area, and we landed on Justin as our homegrown, 19-year veteran of Middletown. I'm extremely pleased to work alongside of him. He's been a very loyal, dedicated, and extremely professional in his 19 years of service here in Middletown. And I always like to say, we recruited him out of the Boston Red Sox, because he was on his pathway in through the minor leagues, and we scooped him up back to New York and eventually in Middletown. He's been here for 19 years, and we have a lot of plans and future plans for, to grow not only the athletic department, to build a bridge between, you know, athletics here and intermuros, to back to the community. So we are extremely pleased and honored to have Justin on our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. First off, I'd just like to say that I was and am honored to be offered this position. Thank you to the Board of Education. I enjoyed meeting with you on the 10th, when we spoke, and thank you to the district administration for giving me the chance to work in this capacity, and Mr. Coats for his mentorship over the last, well, 18 or 19 years. I'm looking forward to getting started. I'm looking forward to working closely with all of you over the coming months and years, and, you know, just really, really enjoying my last couple of months, but looking forward to that next chapter. So thank you very much.
I think it's a great testament to how we've grown talent here in Middletown, that we get to keep it here in-house as well, people who really bleed Middletown blue, as I can tell by Mr. Sturge's tie. So great job, congratulations, good luck, and know that we here at the Board of Education will support you in any way we can moving forward as well. So thank you. Do we have any other personnel appointees at all here today? Okay. Thank you. So I need, moving on to our other action items, I need a motion to approve Financial Memorandum 20D, numbers one and two. Moved by Pastor Williams, seconded by Ms. Tobiasin. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need a motion to approve Special Services Memorandum 19E, numbers one and two.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Mitchell Williams, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need an approval for Change Orders 14F, number one.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Tobiasin, seconded by Pastor Williams. Before we get into discussion, Bill, you want to add?
Good evening. So we have just this one change order tonight, and it's to reinforce the existing concrete floors of steel to support the toilets and lavatories in the remodeled section of Twin Towers.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval to amend the 2024-25 school year instructional calendar. Oh, my, I apologize. Approval, that's why you're keeping me in line here, buddy. Approval of the stipulation agreement between the Enlarge City School District of Middletown and employee number 08074, which was discussed in executive session. I need a motion. Moved by Pastor Williams, seconded by Mr. Freddie Williams. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval now to amend the 2024-2025 school year instructional calendar.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any further discussion?
Does this Superintendent Creedon want to just address the reasoning?
Sure.
Sure. The rationale for the adjustment in the school year calendar this year is because contractual agreements require us to evaluate our ability to meet the New York State Education Department's 180-day and hour requirement, and we believe that we're on track at this point to meet that. Therefore, we'll be providing Tuesday, May 27th, as an extension to the Memorial Day holiday, and the school district will be closed for all employees.
And so, on behalf of all the parents who have children in the district like me, thank you.
So once, okay, so we've got a motion, we've had discussion, I need a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Congratulations, Middletown School District, you have an extra day off on the 27th of May. Now approval to amend the 2025-2026 school year instructional calendar. I need a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rett, seconded by Mr. Mitchell Williams. Would you like, again, to clarify?
The clarification on the shift for this is that we have family conferences shifting from one week to another week in the spring. So no adjustment to days in session, just when the family conferences are being held.
And that's for 2026. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for an MOA for Assistant Director of PE, Health and Athletics, and the Assistant Director of ENL World Languages.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rett, seconded by Mr. Mitchell Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. And now we have a couple of resolutions, K, I, M, N, and O, that I'm going to let Mr. Mitchell Williams handle.
The board hereby amends the resolution for the submission of a proposition from the board meeting dated March 20th, 2025, as follows. Be it resolved, the resolution providing for the submission of a proposition at the annual city-school district meeting to be held on May 20th, 2025, and/or the city-school district of the city of Middletown, Orange County, New York. Resolve that the city-school district of the city of Middletown, Orange County, New York is hereby authorized to construct improvements and to reconstruct various school district buildings and facilities, including site improvements, including athletic fields and playgrounds improvements, and original furnishings, equipment, machinery, apparatus, apparatus, and incidental improvements and expenses in connection with therewith at an aggregate maximum estimated cost of $45,645,000, with $8,462,662 capital reserve fund, 2021 monies, and $10,474,676 unappropriated fund balance to be expended, pay proportion thereof, and the remaining $26,707,662, or so much thereof as may be necessary, shall be raised by the levy of a tax upon the taxable property of said school district and collected in annual instalments as provided by Section 416 of the educational law and anticipated of such tax obligations in said school district. Shall be issued, which may be issued in excess of the constitutional debt limitations, to mature over a period not exceeding 30 years, providing that such bonds shall be payable from amounts to be levied in annual instalments of the taxable real property of said school district, pledging the faith in the credit said school districts for the payment of the principal of and interest of the said bonds. Delegating powers to the chief fiscal officer with respect to the insurance and sale of bond anticipation notes and such bonds, containing an estoppel clause, and providing for the publication of an estoppel notice be approved. Said capital project has been determined to be a type-two action pursuant to the regulations of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation promulgated pursuant to the State Environment Quality Review Act, the implementation of which, as proposed, it has been determined will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact pursuant to NYCRR Part 617.5(c)(1)(2). 617.5C12 and 10. Section 2, the resolution shall take an effect immediately.
Don't you hate legal stuff? So I need a motion. Moved by Ms. Tobiasin, seconded by Mr. Perrino. Any discussion?
I'm going to need Mr. Williams to start breathing in between those sentences.
Will do. He's supposedly in shape, so he can keep going.
I know he's in shape.
That's why I'm not doing it.
I don't care. We don't need to be performing no CPR on anybody passing out from a resolution.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Our next motion, Mr. Mitchell.
L. Motion to adopt 2025-2026 budget resolution as presented. Be it resolved that the Board hereby adopts the proposed district budget for the 2025-2026 school year, 276,417,004, and tax levy increase of 1.99%. Be it further resolved that the proposed budget, district budget for 2025-2026 school year shall be placed on the ballot of Proposition Number One for the May 20th, 2025 budget vote.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Motion.
We need a motion, I'm sorry. Moved by Pastor Williams.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Congratulations, Middletown. You have a school budget for the vote. Our next motion, Mr. Mitchell Williams.
All right. And be it resolved that Enlarged City School District, Enlarged City School District of Middletown Board of Education casts its vote to approve the...
Tax card, the tax one.
Which one?
This one.
Oh, this one?
Yeah, but there's no resolution?
No.
Okay. So I just need a motion to approve the property tax report card for 2025-2026, moved by Mr. Rett.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tobiasin. All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Now our next motion. Thank you, Ms. Montrie, for keeping me in line.
Always. All right. And be it resolved that Enlarged City School District of Middletown Board of Education casts its vote to approve the Orange Oster Bocys 2025-2026 administrative budget in the amount of $9,638,64, and the district clerk is hereby authorized to execute certification of such vote and transmit such certification to the Orange Oster Bocys District Clerk at 53 Gibson Road, Goshen, New York, 10924, or charlene.dep at oubocys.org.
Thank you. I need a motion. Moved by Pastor Williams, seconded by Mr. Perrino. The Bocys folks did a budget presentation here a couple of weeks ago. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. And our final...
Is O. Be it resolved that the Board hereby casts its vote in the election of three members to board Cooperative Educational Services, William N. Boss, Edwin Estrada, and David Eaton.
I need a motion.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Perrino, seconded by Pastor Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention from me, Ms. Montrie. Motion carries seven zero one.
Congrats.
Give a nice round of applause to Mr. Mitchell Williams.
And allow me to congratulate you again, Mr. Estrada, for being voted on positively here. I'm sure it'll happen all around the county, but to be back on the Board for Bocys, so thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. We'll move on to our Board Member recognitions and our community updates, and I'm going to hand it off to my esteemed colleague, Mr. Perrino, for our Elks Recognition Student of the Month for April.
See, would our Student of the Month plus the principal, 12th grade cohort principal? Go up to the podium, please, and members of the Elks, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ms. Acevedo. I am the proud cohort principal of the class of 2025. Thank you for having us here tonight, and thank you to the Elks for being here as well. What an honor it is to present this wonderful young lady. Stephanie Alvarez is truly an exceptional student, whose commission and dedication shine in all that she does. As Vice President of the Diversity Club, President of Senior Enrichment, and a proud member of the National Honor Society, Stephanie leads with empathy and purpose. With a remarkable cumulative GPA of 95%, she has shown not only academic excellence, but also a strong commitment to personal growth and service. Stephanie is widely admired by her peers for her kindness and willingness to go above and beyond to support others. Whether she's volunteering at Experience Our Programs, which is coming up, or helping organize Multicultural Night, which is tomorrow night, she gives her time generously and always puts others first. When asked what she's most proud of, Stephanie highlights her years here at MHS, full of hard work and perseverance and striving to be her best self, not just for her own success, but to uplift those around her. She truly embodies the Elks' core principle of charity, actively participating in initiatives that foster inclusivity, support, and compassion. Stephanie's heart for others and her drive to excel make her a remarkable role model and a deserving recipient of this honor. So thank you so much for having us tonight.
I'd like to thank, for once, I'd like to thank my family for helping me stay strong, keep me motivated.
Where are they, Stephanie?
Hmm?
There we go.
Right there. Yeah. I'd also like to thank my friends for keeping me, like, happy and always getting ready to go to school. Yeah, keeping me uplifted. So I'd like to thank all of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie, on behalf of the Middletown Elks Lodge, 1097, we'd like to present you with this Student of the Month. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
For all your hard work.
We'd also like to give a nice round of applause to the Elks for their continued support for all of our students each month. Congratulations, guys.
We also have the principal of the high school and associate, Bill Donahue, and Ms. Shady here tonight. Would you like to say something, Bill, on this Student of the Month?
Sure. I mean, it's kind of hard to follow, Ms. Acevedo. She said everything. But just again, we are always thrilled for our partnership with the Elks Lodge and the opportunity to recognize some of the excellence. And we will tap into that later in the presentation with our Legacy Plan video, so I don't want to give too much away about that. Yes, Superintendent Creedon?
Yeah, we encourage all of our families and young people are here this evening just to stay a little bit longer than you might normally stay to see the high school's presentation because it's about your young people. So it's a really exciting night.
And we'll try to get there as quick as possible. Next up, we have our recognition of our Middletown High School Key Club. Who's handling that? Mr. Perrino, it's all yours again.
Key Club, would the advisor of the Key Club step up? Kevin Osh? And members of the Key Club, come on up here. And also, members of the Quanis Club. Thank you, Kevin.
Hey, John.
Nice seeing you.
Good seeing you.
Why don't you say something about the Key Club?
Oh, okay. Cool. Good afternoon, or good evening, everybody. Good to see you. Everybody looks great tonight. If you don't know anything about Key Club, we are a student-led organization that is dedicated to one cause, and that is community service. And I have been blessed with just the best kids in the world to make up this club, making my job extremely easy. I took over about four years ago. We had 18, and four years later, we now broke 100 this year. So we are a growing club, and we are going to keep on growing. We have our new members, our new officers, because we go April to April. So Harpreet Cower is our new president, and she's going to lead us to do great in many things. I would also like to take a moment and thank Quanis' help for this. We have the president of Middletown Quanis here, Sue Sheehan. We have our Quanis advisor to the club, Dr. Torley, and they are great. We have Francis Emilio also from Quanis here tonight. So, great leadership, helping us out and helping out the kids. So, thank you to everybody.
And great Middletown supporters all the time.
And of course, thank you, Board of Ed, for your continued support.
I think Mr. Massey is also here tonight, along with other members of the club.
I saw him in the back. John's in the back.
Now, why don't, Kevin, why don't you call the members that are here?
Oh, not everyone's here, so...
And, let's see, members of the Elks, come on up, and why don't you hand out their certificates?
Okay, I'm not even sure who's here today.
I think Quanis, we want the members of the Quanis.
Emmanuel Domingo?
I'd like to congratulate him.
Emmanuel Leon. Juliana Sanchez, not here. Reyna, I did not see. Marilyn has not made it. There was a lot of us there that day.
That's okay. You can say their names, though, so that way they can see on replay that they get in knowledge.
Julian LaRoche. Our president, Harpreet. Armin Hayner is out playing tennis right now, so he could not make it. Hopefully, he is winning his match as we speak. Emilson? Monica? Elizabeth? Ah, there. Elizabeth Seaman? Good job. Omari?
Emilson.
Oh, Emilson walked right by. Sorry, I'm Emilson. Omari? Kyle? I don't see. Jaylee?
Williams.
What?
Williams.
Oh, Kyle. Kyle Williams. I'm very nervous right now.
You can't, you can't, you're not allowed, in this district, you're not allowed to mess up the Williams name. We got enough of them on here.
Don't mess up anybody named Williams. V. Kyle Williams.
Amber? Michaela? Jocelyn is not here. And, last but not least, Haley Reyes. We also, I'm not sure if we said, we also, Chief Slingerland normally helps out with ROTC. He couldn't make it that weekend, so we did have a couple ROTCs there as well, helping us. So thank you, ROTC.
Thank you.
I am stealing your folder, sir.
Member of the Quanis Club?
I'm president. As president of the Middletown Quanis Club, we are so proud of our Key Club and all that they have done for the community and continue to do for the community. So we are very proud to sponsor them and have done it for many, many years. It is also the 100th anniversary of the Key Club.
Oh, wow. Nice.
In the country. Don't know if you know that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very proud of everything you do.
I think you're all going to have your photos taken now.
Yep.
Okay, good. Go right ahead. Quanis?
John coming? Joining the picture?
Thank you.
Key Club's been around a long time.
And continuing our recognitions these evenings, did you want to introduce the next segment?
Yeah, I'd like to welcome Mrs. Rivera-Bott and Ms. Evelyn Sanchez to the podium and our young people who have participated in Pride-Lite.
Once again, good evening once again, Superintendent Creedon, members of the Board of Education and Cabinet Team and the Middletown Community. It is my distinct pleasure this evening, once again, to introduce some very special and talented scholars that we have, who are just phenomenal in exhibiting their leadership qualities, not only within the school district, but also within our community and the wider New York State. So this evening, I have, to my left, is Mr. Emmanuel Rivera-Miranda, and where is she? Come on up. Come on over here. Norma Avia, who you may have seen at the Board of Education meetings here. So I just wanted to say a few words before we start the, oops, sorry, the presentation for them. These exemplary young individuals were selected from a competitive pool of candidates across the Hudson Valley to participate in the Puerto Rican Hispanic Youth Leadership Institute, which is a unique program dedicated to foster a deep understanding of government and the legislative process. Their selection in this Puerto Rican Youth Leadership Institute just shows their remarkable dedication, resilience, and leadership qualities, of which has been evident throughout their leadership opportunities that they have taken part of. Through their involvement in this program, that we're going to show you some beautiful pictures about, and they're going to speak about, they have not only broadened their knowledge, but have also become empowered and shown representation for their peers, embodying the values and service and responsibility that we cherish here in the Middletown City School District. And so what you will see on the screen is the mission of the Puerto Rican Hispanic Youth Leadership Institute, and how it was named after Angelo del Toro in collaboration with the Office of Bilingual Education to recognize scholars of Puerto Rican or Hispanic And so this just shows some pictures, a little bit about student delegates participating in the program, and how graduating seniors are also eligible to apply to earn scholarship programs towards their future career in education. And so here you go, there they are, our legacy makers. And they were chosen through the Hudson Valley Regional Bilingual Educational Network, or the ARBURN, to represent the Hudson Valley, which you see there on the screen in blue, which is one of seven areas of New York State. And they started in this program after applying, doing a resume, and many other pieces to actually be chosen. They had to go to virtual meetings, as you can see there from the dates on the fall, all the way up to just last month, where they went to the state Capitol. And they will be participating now in a reunion, actually, next week on April 29th. And so they went on several road trips to the universities and colleges where they networked, practiced, trained at the following colleges that you can see there, Manhattanville College, Vassar College, SUNY New Pulse, and Rockland Community College. And so I'm going to turn it over a little bit to share an honor that Norma received and was actually, it's a phenomenal opportunity. This is her second year, actually, in the Puerto Rican Hispanic Youth Leader Institute, and it's Manny's first year, but he has many talents he'll tell you about in a few minutes. So I want to turn it over to them, to our scholars, to share a little bit more. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Norma Avila, and I would gladly like to talk about the Somos Junior Delegation. So my junior year of Pride-Lite, which was my first year last year, I was in a room with 150 students. And to be a student, to be chosen, you have to be outstanding, in which what I did, you know, collaborative work, talking to teammates, giving ideas, you really do a lot and a lot of impact work with a group of people. And I, that year, I was like, oh, I would love to go on that trip. I wasn't going to have, like, I had, like, high expectations going to that trip, who wouldn't, it was an educational free trip to Puerto Rico. So that year, I just did what I do, talk, be myself, and all, wasn't shy in giving my opinion. And I was chosen as the Hudson Valley Junior Outstanding Delegate. We, on November 4th to November 9th... We, on November 4th to November 9th, we went to Puerto Rico. I was with six other delegates coming from the Monroe District, New York City, Long Island, Western New York, Syracuse, and the Capitol District, if I don't forget. With that trip, I've seen many people in the right corner, you see Assembly Member Corinas Reyes. Also, I took, I'll show you the next slide. Oh, I didn't put the picture, but I had a personal picture with Corinas Reyes. And in the Puerto Rico trip, as much as we, I love the food and the culture, I also met the president of U Albany, who had an alumni meeting at the Somos Conference. And going to the trip of Puerto Rico, you really see the culture that people have, the neighborly feel. And also, we had the ability to go inside the Fuertaleza, which is where the governor stays at. When we went to Puerto Rico on our, the trip on Wednesday, we were able to go to the three branches of government and for their Puerto Rico, so the legislative, executive, and judicial. And these are the pictures that I have. I love the picture in the left corner, which is showing the building of, that's the, no, Legislative Building, and showing our piece of the American culture and the Puerto Rico culture that they have in there. And it was a really nice trip, and I was lucky to be in.
Alrighty. Hello, my name is Emmanuel Rivera-Miranda. And I would just like to re-thank Ms. Linda Bott behind me. Norma, I'd like to thank you, and all the chaperones that helped. And also the board. I'd like to thank you for giving us this opportunity to go on these trips and, you know, finding it in the budget to allow us to do this. Moving on, I represented Assemblyman Gary Pretlow for the second bill we debated. So, when we went on these trips to these colleges, essentially what we did was we sat in this room with a bunch of kids from different districts. And we would learn about different bills that had actually been debated in the assembly room. But as opposed to, you know, really doing it, we did a mock session. So, we were able to debate on, so my bill was on workers' compensation, specific, sorry, specifically towards the civil districts of New York State. It was, I mean, it was a great experience. I don't know how to explain it. In there, in the assembly room, it's, you know, there's this sort of, I don't know, I don't want to say vibe, but there's this sort of, you know, authority, no, I don't want to say that. Whoa. But yeah, there's this sort of vibe that really, you know, I enjoyed. I really do, I did enjoy learning more about our, you know, New York State Assembly. I hope that eventually I can go next year and, you know, learn more, practice different bills. So, yeah, I mean, that's for that slide. I don't know. You want to talk about yours something?
Yeah. Just like to clarify, like for my bill, student de-escalation, it was more of a summary of how schools counselors can help students that are going through like an episode and all without having a police interference, because that also like costs money for the budget. With also that we do is, as much as researching the bill, we do post, pro and con debates. Because we never know that day of the assembly for, of the mock trial, if we're going to get a Republican or a Democrat. Sometimes, depending on how you feel, you don't want to do either or party, but it's something that you were put in that day. So, if you were going to be a Republican, you were going to be a Republican. If you were a Democrat, you were a Democrat. You just had to make sure both debate papers, that both of your arguments were ready. So, and then that's how we had the process of having different days, different sessions, which was very much helpful, because it helped, it taught us research, it taught us proper websites to use, and many more. Here are the highlights of Pride-Lite. Manny didn't like to take any pictures, but you really do make friends with a lot of people. In the bottom right corner, that was the group giving the Puerto Rico trip, just a presentation on that. But we have like the picture of us like in New Pulse and Sule Rockland. It was very much like a family vibe, because you are with students who are, students and scholars that are coming from like the same background as you, either being first, first generation or second generation immigrants in Hispanic descent. And being in a space that you can speak both English and Spanish, and you don't feel discomfort, you don't feel any like backlash of being who you are. Oh, it's not Loody. But this is the Pride-Lite Weekend, me and Manny, just being the only two from Middletown. We were chosen out of 150, we were one of, two of the 50 students to be, who were chosen to go to the Capitol Weekend. And these were our outfits that we debated in.
Um, so, what? So, just to, you know, go into a little more depth about our experience. It also, so we, there was a big emphasis on like leadership capabilities. And so, I think that was very important that, you know, it really taught you how to be a better like public speaker. It taught you, like she said, how to research and how to be ready. You know, you may not always, you know, get what you want, right? You might have to, like she said, represent a Republican side that you may not agree with necessarily. So, yeah, it just gave us that bit of insight. It was also, like she said, I mean, there were a lot of people that were from the same background, a lot of people that shared the same interests as you, right? We, everyone there wanted to be, you know, wanted to learn more about government, wanted to improve themselves. And so, it was very, you know, surreal. So, I'm very excited for the reunion. Get to see a lot of people, a lot of the seniors that are graduating. I mean, Norma being one of them, unfortunately, she won't be able to come back next year. But, you know, yeah, so I'm very excited. We're going to be able to socialize there, you know, make some more connections, say our final goodbyes. And hopefully, I'll see some familiar faces there next year. So, yeah, it was like a family.
What did this opportunity mean for us? It really meant a lot, as much as I'm being, making new friends, it's just also being surrounded in a different culture with people with different backgrounds. And also, that opportunity gave me this opportunity to be in like the student board member, because I don't think I would have like advocated myself in doing such things and showing, standing out, using my voice. But Pride-Lite definitely gave me that stepping stool that I feel a lot of our Puerto Rican Hispanic students should use and should try to go in and look for.
So, yeah, this opportunity meant a lot to me, especially because I feel like in the past, there weren't that many opportunities, unfortunately, for a lot of Hispanics from various different backgrounds. So, this opportunity meant that, you know, we had been able to, as a country, come together and, you know, really, you know, put an emphasis on the need to have diversity in our governments, whether that be state, local, federal governments. So, the ability for me to learn more about my government despite background was, was a very amazing feeling, especially to share it with people that shared the same interests with me, that could, you know, have that connection, that background. It really was a great time, and it really was very informative and helped shape me. Alrighty. So... So, I am only 11th grade, so next, I will be coming next year. But as for, you know, the actual, my goal out of the program is really just to learn more about government. And hopefully, later on, maybe be a part of something statewide or a federal-wide government, maybe employee or something. Because, you know, having that opportunity to share your perspective and really make an impact on the lives of, of the people in the nation and hopefully make a change for the better, it's very important to me.
As a senior who chose the college, I am going to Monroe University for ultrasound. But because of the opportunity of Pride-Lite, I am also going to be the student representative of my university. So, that's going to be a nice change. I would like to at least like... So, because of Pride-Lite, I am going to do more big things, but I would like to do the medical field and then go into governments, because the government's kind of like, you know, it's a little something, it's a little something. I don't want to put my toes in, no, yeah, it's a little something. Don't want to go do anything dirty too young. We got to live our 20s and all. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. So, thank you President Avila and Governor Miranda. Are you Puerto Rican by chance?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so you, that's a big name to live up to, Miranda, when you're Puerto Rican, so just be aware of that. Does anybody have some brief questions at all or comments?
Don't be shy.
Nice job. Thank you so much for the presentation. Good luck.
I'm just going to be presenting them with their award.
Absolutely, go ahead.
There you go. Congratulations. Okay.
Awesome job. And Mr. Witz waiting for you guys for pictures as well. And while they do that, we'll invite up our next group, our athletic director, Mr. David Coats, with our Winter Athletes Recognitions.
Thank you. Norma is always a tough act to follow, but we're going to try. We had an amazing, amazing, incredible winter. 24, 25 is going to go down in the record books on many, many different levels. I am so extremely proud of our coaches and all of our athletes, our spectators, our parents, our community, how they went out and supported us all, all season long. I'd like to express my gratitude to the Board of Education for always going above and beyond and supporting us, not only with your presence, but with the support, with all the supplies and equipment that we need to keep our kids ready and prepared. And our coaches, their dedicated level and expertise to train our kids to get to these, these levels that we're going to talk about tonight. So, I'm extremely proud of how we persevered this year, proud of our excellence and our dedication. And we're going to celebrate that this evening with six of our, six or seven of our teams tonight. We have many of our, kids are at different spots, we have a huge contingent, but we're going to celebrate everybody this evening. So, what I'd like to do is kind of preface it with, we have, many of our achievements are from our OCIAA. That is our league. We have a lot of place finishers there. We have section nine team championships that we're going to celebrate, along with individual championships.
We have New York State All-American Squad, state qualifiers, and place finishers. We have new school record holders of longstanding school records. And we have multiple All-Americans in the audience tonight. So, congratulations, everybody.
I'd like to call up Coach Moore from the North East Boys Swimming and Diving Team. That was Coach, Coach Moore.
Before, Dave, just before we get out of this, I want to give information for our board members. When we're done with the Winter Athletes Recognition, I'm going to skip over the board member community update so we can get to public participation and then the high school presentation. So, for all the students that want to stay and listen about graduation, so we can get to that.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. So, first off, I just want to say thank you to the board for having us here today. Congratulations to the other sports. We can hear about their accomplishments right after me. But again, I know that they have one whole season as well. Swimming and diving, I got to thank the, our athletic director, Mr. Coats, our administrators, and not only the athletes, but the parents. I don't get to say thanking after them, but parents play such a crucial role for us. It doesn't matter if I'm on the whole, if they're going on, essentially, we have our whole meet, we're going all the way up to Ithaca. Parents, darlings, you know, friends, they always be there for each other. So, thank you. This year, we had 20 athletes. Not all of them compete here today, but they all played such a huge role. Some of them were new. When it comes to swimming and diving and losing the sport, a lot of adjusting, a lot of learning. The competition comes quickly after, so it was a quick learning process. In the beginning of our season, ups and downs, just like everything else, just a nice little roller coaster. We had a lot of great swims, a lot of section qualifiers, but the wins weren't right there. But I knew that the boys, they had the passion, they had the drive, they had all, everything that they needed, and I knew it was going to come around. They got a win really quickly right after, right before winter break. Winter break seemed to be the charm for this team. They made the way up to Albany, they went to the Connecticut Invitational. My first time ever going there was six years ago. The boys scored 4 points. The boys finished this meet scoring 153.5 points. I mean, we definitely put that out. Some of the boys were on the team during that time as well. This sport is for seventh all way up to fall three. The first race, they put up 26 points right away, so already awful hot start. During that race, we had a couple of people medal, and then the 200 free relay won. They won the entire meet on that race, they finished as number one seed. At the end, we joked about it, and the boys were always asking, well, how's, we get medals? What happens with medals? And I said, I'm not too sure. And they said, wow. And I said, I'm going to be honest, we had the first ever winners that I've ever had. So, we're going to find this one out together. So, we had a quick joke about that. But after that, they ran a lot of flop, and they were, well, they got five straight wins right after that. So, they finished over 500, just around 500 this year, six and six, but it wasn't done yet. On their senior night, they pulled off a win by one point against Cornwall, a really tough meet. They were losing the entire meet, but again, the drive, the dedication, the support, on the final race, they pulled ahead one by one. And on their senior night, one, and that's exactly how that season was going to go. And I knew right then and there, I was like, that defines the season. But they weren't done. OCIAA championships are sorely around the corner now. We had a couple people, you know, make it, go in, they did their thing. Vernon Lamb, he finished second and third, now 53.100 free. Jordan Kristof Gonzalez, I'm going to hold off on him for a little bit, because I'm going to talk about him overall at the end. The 200 free relay, they won 07 championships first time for me. So, another championship.
At this meet, that 2 free relay, actually, at this point, I would like to call up Jordan Kristof Gonzalez, please come on up. Can I have also, everybody, this is Jordan, everybody, can I have Anthony Barone, Eli Bryant, Maurice White, Elijah Ponte? Now, definitely, like I said, we had 20 people on the team, these are the individuals that were to make it. So, they played a huge role, they finished top five at OCIAAs, and then they finished top eight at sections. Maurice White, he did not know how to swim the fly the first day. He competed it at the sections for us and did it in a top, one of the top times for us at the end of the year. So, huge, huge improvement by him. So, at OCIAAs, when we won the 2 free relay, Jordan Kristof Gonzalez decided to do a couple amazing things. So, not only did we win it, he broke the school record and made a state qualifying time. So not only did we win it, he broke the school record and made a state qualifying time. What was amazing, actually, because after looking at the video, what was amazing was not only just that he qualified and that he made the state cut, was that he was jumping for his team because he knew that they were about to win OCIAAs. And that, to me, just shows that the leader and the dedication that he is, because a lot of people would've just got out and just saw that they had the individual success, but that's not who he is. He stayed there, he jumped for joy, and the only thing he said to me was that "We did it," and it had none of...and he did not say that he did it by himself with his individual, he was more talking about the relay. So thank you, Jordan, for everything. So overall, though, it was definitely my best season that I've had in the last six years. They won the two free relay at Schenectady in OCIAAs, they finished third in the two free medley at Schenectady, third at sections, what's it called, third in the two free at sections, and fifth in the four free relay. We had 10 boys, so most of them are standing behind me right now, competed at the Section IX tournament. Big shoes to fill, success is gonna keep growing for us. Thank you again to everybody, definitely thank you to Coach Calante and Coach Tuttle, without them, we definitely would not be standing here today. So again, thank you to everybody, thank you to all the other coaches, good luck for the rest of your seasons.
And Dave, before we move on, so first of all, I want to say hi to Jordan. I've known Jordan since he was like this big, so...he's much bigger now.
Yes, he is, yes, he is.
For those watching MIDI TV and the Board of Ed meeting, we do apologize, we did have technical difficulties a little bit earlier, we may have lost some of the sound that we just heard. We do have a backup recording that we'll utilize on MIDI TV if, for some reason, the audio didn't come through on the first part. They did, in the middle of it, it came back on, which is one of the reasons why I was distracted a little bit, but nevertheless, it's back up and running.
Thank you, Mr. Strata. We're gonna call up Coach Lichtenstein with the Varsity Boys Wrestling Team.
I think what happened was that the livestream knew that Jason was coming up next, and it better come up, or else he was gonna...
Try to have a lot of... We're currently in a spring league, we're out in Pennsylvania, where we're three and one. So like, you know, the success we had in season, the guys are already picking up and they're ready to build upon it, and it's been a lot of fun with these guys. This past season, for the sixth straight year, we made the New York State All-Scholar Team. New York State requires 75% of the roster. In order to be on that team, we were able to have 87% of our roster qualify for the New York State All-Scholar Team, which, you know, we made it eight times in the past 16 years, and like I said, six years in a row says a lot about these young men. For the third year in a row, we were in the Section IX Championship match. We won it last year, this year we finished second, but you know, you just see the level of success these guys are expecting every year. You know, and for like the fifth year in a row, we had over 20 duel meet victories, and they finished 25 and five as a team this year. So as a team, the success was there, it's a lot of fun to watch these guys, they really expect the success to come from one another, and you see it, how it feeds off of what they're doing, and especially like in the offseason. You know, we're having 30 kids at a practice, you know, three times a week, says a lot about what they're doing and where they're going. This year was another, you know, another great year for us, we had nine kids place in the section tournament. For the sixth straight year, we had seven...we had more than two kids qualify for the New York State Championships, and for the seventh straight year, we had a New York State medalist. So, you know, the program's in a pretty good spot right now. In a couple minutes, Coach Nicholas will get up and talk, and you know, with the girls' program and our program combined, there's over 200 kids wrestling in the city of Middletown right now. You know, our Bear Cave carries 70 kids, our modified program carries over 40, and then both the high school teams have, you know, healthy numbers of 35, 40 kids each. You know, so we have over 200 kids wrestling right now, it's something that...it's a movement that we're very proud of, you know, getting the kids in the city of Middletown to face the adversity of a sport like wrestling, you know, and, you know, you see what's going on with our guys when they leave for college, they're doing excellent, excellent things at the college level. Bryson Tibbs placing the region this year for Cortland, and of course, you know, Steph was a SoCon champ and national qualifier, so it's a lot of fun to watch these guys and see what they're doing, and for these young guys to see the success that their peers are having when they leave Middletown says a lot, too. But right now, we'd like to just honor the guys for their placing in the section tournament.
And Jason, can you also just mention the names of your coaches to give them...
Oh, I'm sorry. So our coaching staff, which is awesome, it's comprised of Middletown graduates, it's myself, Pedro Rosales, Eugene Naboa, Elijah Bab, Pat Doty, Bobby Mangano, we, you know, we're the high school staff, so it's, you know, a whole group of Middletown guys that are super proud of the program and where we came from and what we're doing. So without those guys, you know, we would not be where we are. So we're in a very, very good spot right now. Our all-section wrestlers, our first all-section wrestler, he was...he's a freshman, he took sixth in the section at 108 pounds, and that's Evan Bryant. Our next all-section wrestler, he's in eighth grade, he took fourth in the section this year at 108 pounds, and that's Israel Rosales. Our next guy took...he's a junior, he wasn't able to make it tonight, but he took fourth in the section this year, that was Miguel Nieves. One of our team captains, he's a sophomore, he took a family trip down to Mexico, but he took sixth in the section this year, and that was Carlos Contreras. Another sophomore of ours, a lot of these guys are young, which is awesome for us, he took sixth in the section at 145 pounds, that's Alex Lano. Our New York State Qualifiers, so we're getting, you know, getting a couple guys here that are getting close to breaking some numbers history-wise. This next young man here, he became the 20th wrestler in Middletown wrestling history to have over 100 wins. He currently sits at eighth place all-time with 115 wins, and he's a junior. He's a two-time state qualifier for us, and that's DJ Aviles.
And if memory serves, the most exciting match in Section IX last year, if I remember.
DJ is good for keeping us on our toes. He keeps it exciting. And last but certainly not least, one of our team captains, he had our MIDI Magic Moment of Sections this year, wrestling for third place, he was down pretty good amount, and the kid's known never to give up in a match, and you know, down 11-0, he pulls out, you know, a pretty slick move there and pins the kid, and qualifies for his first New York State Tournament, and that was Justin Naboa. You know, like we said, a lot of these guys come back next year, you know, there's a lot, a lot of young guys coming up through the program, so we're, you know, very happy where the program is. The support we get from you guys is awesome, sharing our stuff on social media, you know, talking about it, we see what everybody says about us, we do really appreciate that because, you know, everybody sees what you guys say about us, and having that public word and the support from you guys is very valuable to us, so thank you, guys.
Next up, we're gonna...Coach McAluso is out sick today, unfortunately could not be here tonight. Sophie McAluso, who's also one of our assistants and is out, and Coach Vanderward's wife just had twins. So now our backup to the backup to the backup is Coach Nicholas, who's gonna do an amazing job with our Varsity Girls Wrestling Team.
Thank you, everybody. So girls' wrestling in New York is still pretty much in its infancy. Two years ago, it was voted on to be a sanctioned sport with no state tournament. This year, the girls had their own state tournament. With that, they switched styles. So in...so in boys' wrestling, it's called folk style or scholastic style. New York decided this year to make girls a freestyle, which is international style. And that's what they wrestle in college, so it made sense. So, you know, if Norma wanted to go to college and wrestle, grooming her now in high school would make it an easy transition in college, and that's the ultimate goal, we want to get these girls wrestling in college and furthering their careers. This year, we finished second in a team title. We lost to Menesink, unfortunately. I'm a Menesink guy, but...
We won't hold that against them here, either.
Yeah, so we finished second as a team. We had six finalists, 11 placers, we had one champ, and we had five state qualifiers. During the season, we don't get to wrestle duel meets like the boys do, so we wrestle multi-meets, so all the girls get matches, and it's good, but I'm hoping that next year we actually get to wrestle more. We did go 2-0 as a team against Port and VC in a regular duel meet. So like I said...
One of the first duel meets in New York State, by the way.
Yes, that was...it was here.
Yes.
Yeah. It was us against Port, so that was pretty fun, and it was our senior night, so we had a huge crowd, it was great. But I'm gonna call up, you know, all of our section placers and state qualifiers. I'm gonna start with a couple girls that aren't here yet or are not gonna make it. First is Alessandra Soto, she took third. Next is Carol Cartucci, she also took third. Next is Kailani Ramakasum, she took second. I say she won.
Controversial that.
If this was...if it was a college tournament, I would definitely throw in a brick to get a challenge. She also was a state qualifier, so to qualify to go to states, you had to take first or second. So we took the top two. All right. Next, the girls that are here, we have Angelica Cabrera, she took second. If you want to come up. Next, I have Haley Lichtenstein, she took third. Next would be Aleah Soto, Mia's younger sister, she took third. Next, we have Midiram Manchery, she took third. Next, we have Malita Palais Cologne. Malita was also a state qualifier. Next, we have Gianni King, who's also a state qualifier. Next, Ms. Norma Avila. Norma took second, also qualified to go to states. And last but not least, our section champ and state qualifier, Shane Darlene. Just on one note, this was Shane's first year wrestling. That's your first year wrestling? Yeah. So it was pretty amazing to watch Shane start. She didn't know a cradle from a double. She was flopping around, you know, like a fish, but to watch her go from that to being a section champ was pretty amazing.
Awesome, nice job. Dave, how many are seniors?
We have...we have six seniors on the team. So our future is very bright. We have...we had a lot of underclassmen, we had some...we had a couple eighth graders, and I think the sport is only going to grow from this point. I think eventually, Middletown will be hosting a JV team and a modified team, just like our...just like our boys.
Okay.
So that is the plan, but they did an amazing job in their second year in producing champion in the first year, champion in the second year, and now having five state qualifiers is just an amazing accomplishment. So I'm really proud of that coaching staff, and especially the girls, and how hard they worked this year. Our next team that we're gonna bring up is a two-time section champion team, our Varsity Boys Bowling Team, coached by Morgan Ivich.
Thank you, guys, for having us here tonight. This was our sixth season as a team and our second section title in three years. It's been so nice to watch this program progress so quickly. Like I said, it's only a six-year-old program, we've already won sections twice, and we've also had other bowlers qualify to go to states two other times, so four out of the six years we've existed, we went up to the state tournament in Syracuse. We finished this year with a 12-2 record and won sections by 378 pins, holding off the competition during all six games that we bowled. We also had two bowlers, Jace Mazur and Carter Yanni finished in the top 10 averages in the section. Carter was able to attend states, not only with our team, but he was part of the Section IX composite team, which is made up of the top six averages in the section, and competes against the other top bowlers in the state. As a seventh grader, he finished the season with 196 average. At states, we also achieved a Section IX first by ending our first three games in first place, which is something another Section IX team has never done, especially at the large school level. I couldn't be more proud of this team, the opportunities we've had, and I'm really excited to see how we continue to grow in coming years. So I have...we had six boys on the team, we play six. So our six starters, two of them couldn't make it tonight, that is Colby Store and Isaiah And then for the bowlers that are here, Jace Mazur. And Chase Yanni, who's been on the team since eighth grade, and he's graduating. Thank you, guys, again, so much.
Next up, we're gonna call up Coach Diana and the Varsity Girls Basketball Team, as they won the Section IX basketball championship this year.
Good evening. Thank you to the board for inviting us to recognize a very special group of scholar athletes. Through hard work, dedication, and perseverance, this team ended with an overall record of 19 and 4. We had two Section IX Top 50 athletes, Ashley McCollum, Cindy McCollum, and won a Section IX title, which hadn't been done in 22 years. All while maintaining a GPA of 92.66. A special thanks to my assistant coach, Ed Bobell, and the entire coaching staff, past and present, they are a huge part of our team's success. We also had an amazing group of parents, fans, and the Middletown School community that were there for us the entire season. Thank you for all of your support. It was an absolute honor coaching this group, and I am so proud of them. We had a couple girls that weren't able to make it tonight, but Elaine Gonzalez, Severa Berthoff, Annalee Alvarez, Amira Wallace, Ashley McCollum. And I'd like to call up the girls that are here tonight, Leila Cardi. Michaela Thomas. Michaela Thomas, Mia DeZau, Jaden Ferguson, Senior Captain Haley Rodriguez, and Senior Captain Sidney McCollum.
Is that a cutout of Ashley?
Yes, it is.
Hey Coach, how many seniors you have up there? How many are returning?
Two seniors.
So you got quite a few returning, alright, that's great.
And I will say that I've had the privilege of being the public address announcer for Middletown Girls Basketball since 2003. And it was an honor watching you guys this year and doing your game. And they lost in the opening round state playoff game, but they lost to the state champion. So, and they not only lost to the state champion, they had a young lady on that team, Albertis Magnus, who's probably gonna be, you're gonna see her in the WNBA at one point in time. So, no Trump change there. They, they did themselves proud the entire year, especially with that win over Pine Bush in the section final, so congratulations.
Thank you.
And by the way, we have somebody who'll probably be in the WNBA too, but I won't say.
Took the words out of my mouth, I was gonna say that.
And last but not least, we have our track and, indoor track and field team. Coach, Coach Stalter is going to be heading this up tonight. Coach Hipsman and Coach Hammer are down at the Penn Relay, so I'd like to thank Coach Stalter for stepping up for the team.
Forgive me, I don't like speaking in front of people, so I'm gonna do my best on this. First, I just wanna say good evening and thank you to Superintendent Creedon and President Estrada and everyone else that I see here before us. Also, just the other coaches that we have on our staff. It's Hammer Jr., Ingladon Epzito, Scherter Schmidt, and may Coach Senior rest in peace, as it says on our shirt. He has been one of the biggest part of our program and just to talk about him kind of first, it was, that was a big loss to our program. But he has definitely lived on in, sorry, in what we all do as coaches. And he is like one of the biggest part of this and he has been just the biggest part within his son and just how he carried over into each one of us. And it goes to show the amount of success our kids had as a whole. It wasn't just any group, it was every single group did amazing this indoor season. And indoor is probably one of the longest seasons. It feels like it starts in November and it's still going in March into April and that's kind of what's happening right now. But we had a lot of great success over the last few months and we've had a lot of state qualifiers, section championships. I'm gonna go over that and kind of talk about those things as the best I can. So first, I'm gonna talk about just the Section 9 champions. So for the 4x2 relay, Section 9 champion for the girls, and forgive me as I read them out. It's Naima Francis, they're actually here, as Mr. Coach said, they are heading to Penn Relays to run tomorrow, tomorrow morning. So we wish them luck on their 4x1 relay. And then also, for the Section 9 champion is Troy Roberts, again, and she's running with the Penn Relay. Justina Gray, and Priscilla Hilton. And then also on the boys, we've had other state qualifiers, Anthony Ramos in the triple jump. And Section 9 champion is Quillar Beatty, he was here. He also has an amazing school record and I'll talk about that in just a moment.
What year?
He's a senior.
Ah, darn.
Got big plans.
Alright, and then also another state qualifier, I can't even talk today, qualifier is my thrower, Miles Barry. He's the weight throw champion this year. And Section 9 shot put as well.
Also a senior?
Also a senior.
Big plans.
Where are they going, where are they going?
They are both going. To Union Albany.
Alright.
And just to kind of go over a few others, I know I was just trying to keep everything organized and my thoughts organized. But as I said, as we move into that, they also qualified for states. Quillar is second place in the 55-meter hurdles at the state championship. And also, the same 4x2 relay was also second place at the New York State Track and Field Championships. And, and at the second, and Miles Barry is second place in the weight throw and the first Middletown thrower to actually score on the medal stand at the New York State Track and Field Meet. And then last but not least, we did have other national qualifiers, so it was again, some of the same names. Naima Francis in the 60 meters and 200 meter, Priscilla Hilton in the 200 meter, Justina Gray 200 meter, Troy Roberts 400 meter, Quillar Beatty in the 60-meter hurdles, Miles in the shot put and the weight throw, and the girls 4x2, Naima Francis, Troy Roberts, Justina Gray, and Priscilla Hilton. Also amongst this group, we also do have some All-Americans. For the girls 4x2, they are second, second place Nike National All-Americans. And Miles Barry is also the first All-American for the weight throw and for the Middletown throwing and just in history for here. And just overall too, we've had a lot of records broken, so actually, all that have these certificates in front of us, all now have school records. Miles holds the school record now in the shot put and the weight throw. Quillar holds the school record now in the 55-meter hurdles and 60-meter hurdles at 7:37 seconds and 7.98 for the 60-meter hurdles. And then, sorry, go ahead, keep going, sorry. And the girls 4x2 also has a new school record and they are also now the new Section 9 record holder with a time of 1:42.34. And then also, Miles, with his record, he threw 71 feet in the weight throw and 52.10 in the shot put. I just wanted to say thank you for all the support and even the parents that have supported us in the program. It's a lot of work, we've done a lot of all-year-round training, whether it's the sprinters, long distance. We tend to live here, I know I live here a lot of times when the lights are still going on out there. But all that time spent goes to show what these kids are made of and what they truly can be and they truly are champions, that's how I look at it.
And your teams always represent the school district in great fashion, so we want to thank all of you guys for doing that. I know, do you guys, are you guys both on the outdoor, doing outdoor as well? So, Middletown, for those of you who don't know, will be the host for this year's New York State Championships in Track and Field, which is the largest sporting event in New York State. So 2,000, at least more, at least 2,000 athletes alone-
Over 2,000.
-will be coming here the weekend of June 13th. So, if anybody wants to volunteer, we can get some volunteers.
But Albany got a package deal with these two, this is an amazing, a bunch of talent behind us. And it's a dedication to their family, to the coaches and the community, because they are extremely talented.
And those, those records that you're holding for somebody who used to have a record here as well, you always remember that when you get much older in life and you want to remind people.
And not only are they great athletes and great students, they're great, great young men, sportsmanship winners are behind us. So just tremendous talent, but great people.
Congratulations.
For you guys that don't know, also, Miles Barry is my cousin and that's my family over there.
So, so where did, where did they get their athletic prowess, if it wasn't from you?
Thank you very much, we know that this was long, but it was well-deserved and thank you very much for supporting us always, always, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. That was awesome. So we can try to get to our high school presentations as quick as possible, next up, Mr. Prina.
I think, and I don't know if Dave is still here, Dave, I think one of the big benefits of our total athletic program is that all our coaches encourage the, their team members to do well in school. And that is important because that's the primary purpose, getting students ready for college and careers. So, congratulations to all your coaching staff for doing, for doing this. And you know, it pays off, we have two individuals here, Bishop Williams and Ms. Monchery. They're, they're children, one in track and field, track and one in wrestling, they're on full scholarships. So it pays off to, but you also have to do well in school to get one of those.
100%, that's one of our founding principles from when we started way back, even before me.
So keep up the good work on that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prina, thank you, Dave. So we'll move on to our public participation and an opportunity to address the Board of Education. The Board will designate a portion of its meeting agenda for public comment for a period, period of up to 40 minutes. Each speaker will be allowed up to four minutes. The public is not permitted to discuss topics and their matters involving specific individuals. Speakers must sign in prior to speaking and speakers are not permitted to cede their time to other speakers. Norma? Thank you, Ms. Avila. Are there any takers to address the Board of Education this evening? Nobody? Okay. Hopefully that means we're doing a good job. We'll move on, any letters to the Board of Education, Mrs. Monchery? No letters. Oh, we do have a speaker. I know, good point out there, Ms. Adoma. Nah, all good. You have very important information for our high schoolers.
I certainly do. Good evening, I'm Mrs. Glickman, junior class advisor, also runs the prom.
And a member of the track team, it sounds like.
I ran, I was like, wait a minute, that's my time. So yes, the prom is coming up Friday, June 16th. We are in the midst of selling prom tickets. We have, what did I say? My nudge, alright.
She skipped prom and gone right to graduation.
May 16th on a Friday, sorry. And we are in the midst of selling prom tickets, started out slow, it's starting to pick up, but I want to strongly, strongly suggest that everyone pick up their prom packets because this is, this was the last full week to pick up your prom packets. They need to get, everyone needs to get vetted and approved and then to buy the tickets. We are selling, we sold tickets tonight. We're selling tickets tomorrow night at the multicultural night, so I hope everyone comes out for that too, enjoy the multicultural night here at the high school. And we'll be selling tickets next, the week after, the May 3rd, on a Saturday, for the Spring Musical, the Spelling Bee. Alright, and then of course, during the school day. Thank you very much, have a great night.
So if students have any questions about the prom or anything, who should they direct them to, their local house?
Thank you.
Yes, I mean, we at the prom table, selling the tickets, we have access to let people know whether or not they've been approved. I had several students come up to me tonight and ask me if they were approved so they know that they can purchase their ticket. Yes, but they can, they can also email me, there's a, we created an email address, it was prom. Yep, and I think it just says prom, MHS Prom, it's on the packet, it's on the bottom of the packet, the email address.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you don't have to run back to the table, do you? You're welcome. Would anyone else like to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we will now move on to our superintendent updates with a, with a lot of good information on the high school.
Thank you so much, I'm excited to invite the entire high school team up this evening to wrap up our Legacy Plan updates and share all the exciting things that are happening at the high school, followed by College and Career Center that's here this evening, as well as then graduation.
Good evening Superintendent Creedon, President Estrada, members of the Board, and the Middletown School Community. It is with great Midi pride that we present our Legacy Plan tonight. This video is not just a collection of images and words, it is truly a testament to all of the incredible, not all, it's impossible to capture all, but it is a testament to the incredible things happening at MHS. We have worked to craft a vision that reflects our commitment to academics, attendance, and community engagement. It's truly legacy-making in action. We want to take a brief moment to extend our heartfelt gratitude to the District Communications Team. Their patience and collaboration have been invaluable in bringing our vision to life. They have truly captured our mission to reignite Midi pride in a way that resonates with each and every one of us. So, without further ado, on behalf of the entire MHS administrative team behind me, we are thrilled to present our Middletown High School Legacy Plan.
There's been a lot said about Middletown High School, about our scholars, about who we are.
Here's what we know. Our scholars are reigniting their pride, their Midi pride. It's more than a feeling, it's part of our Legacy Plan. A commitment to academics, attendance, and community engagement. And it's fueled by something deeper. A belief in who our scholars are becoming, because here at Middletown, we always begin with the end in mind.
And that pride, it lives in every classroom, every hallway, and across the greater Middletown community.
In our classrooms, pride grows from effort and is celebrated out loud. Scholar athletes are recognized for balancing excellence on the field and in the classroom. Scholars of the Month are honored, not just for grades, but for character and spirit. And while we celebrate today's achievements, we're also preparing scholars for tomorrow. In our College and Career Center, they explore what's next, whether it's college, the military, a trade, or a direct path into a career. The National Academy Foundation pathways in finance, information technology, engineering, and health sciences prepare scholars with 21st century skills. Scholars also work towards distinguished honors, like the Seal of Civic Readiness and the Seal of Bilinguacy. Recognition that proves they're not just learning, they're leading. Leading change in their community and preparing them for demands of the workforce in a multicultural world. This is what it means to prioritize academics within our Legacy Plan. Learning that inspires confidence and creates opportunity.
Midi pride isn't just academic, it's cultural. It shows up in the Midi Museum, where scholars create interactive exhibits that reflect who they are.
It shows up in the dozens of clubs that give every scholar a place to belong.
And it's on full display through athletics, where heart, discipline, and excellence come together in top-tier facilities. We also bring the world in through generous community donations and support from district departments- departments like special services. Authors like Jason Reynolds. Speakers like Matt Bennett. Artists who turn emotion into expression. These experiences affirm identity, spark inspiration, and help boost attendance, because when scholars feel seen, they show up, and they thrive.
Our pride doesn't stop at the building's edge, it stretches through Middletown. When Norma Avila joined the Board of Education, scholar voice gained a seat at the table.
According to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
All right. That's a.
Our student leadership team meets regularly with school leaders to help shape the culture And at the breakfast of champions, quiet acts of integrity are celebrated in front of families and friends. Community connection is more than words, it's action. Through my brother's keeper and my sister's keeper, we mentor and uplift. Through citywide cleanups, our scholars and staff walk Middletown streets, giving back with pride. The Wall of Fame reminds us that Midi pride doesn't end here, it goes with you into the world. And through the everyday work of custodians, cafeteria staff, security, and technicians, our scholars are surrounded by a community of people who show up, support them, and help the school thrive, often behind the scenes, but never without impact.
This is who we are. We are a community, lifting each other up, showing the world what it means to wear the Midi M. We are legacy makers, and if we leave anything behind, let it be this, that the legacy of Middletown High School is the pride these scholars and this community feel in each other. Because everything we do here, we do with the end in mind. This is how we're building our legacy, together.
My mom. I love you, Mom. And let me just say this, I mean, this is, every day since I got this job, and I always speak for myself, and I'm sure I'm speaking, I know I'm speaking for my team behind me, every day is like a dream. And just this video right here was not that hard to put together. What was hard to fit into a manageable chunk size, because if we were truly getting every single great thing that was happening on a daily basis, that video, we'd probably have to come back and do a meeting tomorrow. So, it is, and Norma was, you saw her several times throughout there. But I just cannot say enough, you know, Midi pride, alive and real, and it is just something to celebrate, and you see it every single day, I talk about it every single time I'm at this mic. Just this building is truly a monument to greatness, it is around us all day long, and just that video captures just a, I think, a snippet of it, just to kind of display what our kids are doing.
I think you found your entrance video to right before the graduates walk on for graduation this year. I mean, for the crowd to see that, and then have the graduates walk in, that's just, that's amazing. That was awesome, absolutely awesome.
Thank you.
I did ask, and I, no, 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 I just, I didn't know if I'm speaking out of hand, but I asked Mr. Whit and Dr. Johnson, who are representatives of the city, if we can maybe perhaps send the city all of our videos to play on Channel 20 as well, because they were community, you know, it says a lot about our involvement with the community as well. So, that's what's just, any other comments, Mr. Moore, or anything?
Great work, and keep up the great energy. Like you said, the video probably would be probably two days long.
Yes. For real. Mr. Prina?
I think it's an excellent idea, Ed, to show our videos and so on on Channel 20. I can't say enough about the administrative and instructional staff of that building. And people in the viewing audience has to remember that we have 2,700 students in that building, and the vast majority of these students go about their job in a very workmanlike manner and do a good job, and that's evident in the colleges that they get into each year, and the careers that they follow, and those students going into the military. We had one student, we had one of our NJOTC cadets, he was accepted into the nuclear program in the Navy, and he's going to be receiving quite a sum of money, it'll total $75,000 by the time he gets after basic training. So, good job, folks, you're doing it, you're making the school proud, district proud. I graduated from Middletown, Ed graduated, and John Williams graduated from Middletown. So, we know how it was, and we know how it is now, believe me. More, 1,000% more opportunities. Thank you. Nice job.
Thank you, Mr. Prina. Mr. Rat?
Oh, yeah. Once again, great job. You know, I know you guys well, I've been in the building so many years and watched the growth, watched the teamwork, and the fact that, you know, just being liaison, I'm excited about working with you guys. Pictures worth 1,000 words, and that is indicative of what you guys just presented, and keep up the good work, proud of you guys, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Rat. Ms. Avila?
The first thing I'm gonna say is, I'm charging rates for my face now, 'cause all them photos. I thought it was just like a couple, I didn't know all the sports, and then...
She's working on her own personal NIL.
Yes, I was just about to say.
Norma, you do a lot, like it's hard to not show, I mean, you do a lot of great stuff.
You know, being a senior, I've been with you guys for the whole entire year, the bell changes, yonder pouches and all.
Billy, is he on payroll?
I wish, overtime, right now.
Hey, I'm hoping one day.
Me, too.
I'm joking, but the staff, I feel like you guys see me, my smile and all, and I really appreciate all the work and the support that you guys have for everyone right now. Cohort 2021? Damn. Best cohort, not gonna lie. Just everybody, you guys are always there for the students, and I don't know what other ways to like thank you guys, but yeah. Waiting for the payroll, though.
Thank you, Ms. Avila. Pastor Williams?
I don't think anybody understands the level of pride that I have in this district, and, you know, even before coming on this board, it's been some years now, but just the level of pride in watching, watching the way things have progressed, and, and, and to, to watch our scholars over the years, those that have, those that have come through these halls, have graduated and gone on to other things, and to be, and to be a graduate of Middletown. And then also, to, 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 to know so many of you that are standing over there right now, and others that are, that operate throughout this building and in this district. I mean, the level of pride that I have for all of that is astronomical. I can't tell you how proud that video makes me. That is, that's huge. And, and I always said that I would use my, you know, having a seat at the table, is that I will always use my, my platform to always speak to what is right and what is true, but not just that, whatever platform I have, wherever I go, you know, I represent Middletown. So, I want to, I'm gonna take this video, this video, this video is going out to all of the NISBA Board of Directors, I'm making sure that they, they see it from Niagara Falls all the way out to the tip of Long Island, that they see what Middletown is doing. Because of your work, because of what you have done, because of these wonderful scholars, because of this administration and this board, this Board of Education, Middletown, Middletown is in the mouth of people all over, and, and so, I couldn't be prouder as a, as a Middletown graduate and as a resident of this community, and as a part of this, this district. So, thank you guys so much. Keep, keep up the good work.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. Mr. Freddie Williams?
Thank you.
Despite being a Pine Bush grad, you bleed Midi blue and wing out it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. My address was always Middletown.
There we go.
Just throw that in there. I was five minutes from Middletown High School.
10941 is a little different than 10940, but that's still Middletown.
I was five minutes from Middletown High School, and I took a bus ride, 32 minutes to Pine Bush, so you figure it out.
We, you are Midi blue, my friend.
Yeah, yeah, and I started, I started, and I'm back. So, joining the board at 2000, I'm sorry, 2020, I was able to take a real deep dive into how this works, this whole thing. And, you know, having a son in the district now, he's in eighth, he was in fourth grade when I started, and just seeing him being able to thrive in the programs, you know, in, in the classroom, on the court, on the fields, being completely transparent, this kid gets tugged on by a lot of different entities, you know, school-wise. And this video right here is, exemplifies why he's going to be in Middletown next year as a freshman, right? The culture of Middletown, I've watched, even though I went to Pine Bush, I had multiple family members that came here, and the culture is, is, that's a big word in decision-making when, when, when kids hear about Middletown, see Middletown. Like Pastor said, when we went to, I think it was Buffalo the year before, at the NISBA Conference, and even this year in Midtown Manhattan, and when you say Middletown, everybody knows about Middletown, right? And it's, and it's good, it's all good. So, that video just captures so many good things on so many different levels. It was, it was like great to watch, like that's something I could watch like 10 times. And I see my son, I see my cousins, I see just so many kids in this video, you know, I'm thinking back years past, that, you know, it's just, it's just an amazing watch. Like Mitch said, it was just like, we were over here just like in awe. So, you guys do an amazing job. I know many of you guys for years, at Don who, I know you since, we both graduated in 97, you were on this side, I was on that side. You're doing an amazing job, your team is doing an amazing job. Whomever put that physically together, too, we gotta clap it up for them. I don't know who, the tech team, or... But just an amazing job, guys. I'm happy I'm here, I'm happy my son is here, and, you know, just keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Freddie Williams. Mr. VP?
That was an excellent video, excellent video. What made it so great for me is, because I know it's not smoke and mirrors, it's real. You know, that's a reflection of our city. You know, that's, that's exactly what that was, you know, there's 18 of y'all, you know, y'all have our most precious jewels, having our kids, and y'all doing the right thing with them. You know, as me living in the city for over 20 years and just being a part of this community, that right there is our city. So, when people talk about our city, that's our city, if you're not sure. That's Middletown, one Middletown, and I thank y'all.
Thank you. Nothing I can add. You know, a lot of thanks to everybody, and thanks to the IT crew as well for putting everything together. They do amazing work each and every day, not just on this video, but, you know, we gotta get their faces out there, too. But thank you, guys, that was awesome.
Thank you.
Ms. Creedon?
Now, I'm going to invite our outstanding College and Career Center to come on up and share some updates with us.
Between the video and Everton singing, or his musical lyrics, I think we've gotta be, we're gonna have a hot graduation this year, I'm thinking.
Good evening, everybody. So, we're just gonna start off our presentation, introducing ourselves. So, I'll go first, my name is Dana Dwyer, I'm one of the school counselors in the College and Career Center.
Hello, everyone, my name is Everton Brown.
Hello, everyone, my name is Erin Weeks, and I'm one of the school counselors as well.
So, to start off, we'd just like to talk about the heart of the College and Career Center. So, every scholar that walks into our office, we pride ourselves on being an inclusive and inviting environment, thank you, Norma. So, every scholar that walks in deserves individualized attention and support based on what their needs are. So, regardless of whether or not a scholar is going to college, trade school, into the military, or straight into the workforce, we work really hard to make sure we're meeting all of their needs and helping them with whatever it is that they need from us. So, this is just a list of our daily services. What we do every day is much more than this list, but just to kind of give you a little recap of what it is, college application assistance, financial aid and scholarship support, career exploration and resume building, college visits and recruitment events, and classroom presentations. Again, this doesn't encompass everything that we do, we also have all the personal stuff that goes on, all of the other behind-the-scenes work that we do every day with our scholars, but this is just the basis of what it is that we do every day in our office. So, so one, one of the really fun things that we do in our office are instant decision days, where we have numerous colleges and universities, as well as straight schools, come into our office and actually accept students on the spot. So, this is just a recap of what we've done so far this school year. We've had SUNY Orange come in three times, over 100 of our scholars have been accepted on the spot. We've had Ramapo College come in, six of our scholars were accepted. Mount St. Mary College came in, we had 10 of our scholars accepted. Dominican University came in, we had four, and the University of Mount St. Vincent was five scholars. Again, these are students who are applying on the spot, getting their acceptance letter, and being able to run home and go tell all their friends and family that they were accepted to college that day. These are just some of the pictures we really like to support and emphasize all the hard work that our scholars do, so every time they get an acceptance letter or a T-shirt, we take a picture, just to really commemorate everything that they're doing.
We've been on several field trips this year, and it's a great opportunity for scholars to actually see college campuses, see what the facilities are like, the classrooms, gym, dining halls, lecture halls, and it's a cliche, but truly, our scholars do, you know, walk away from these visits, you know, kind of getting that feeling of, yes, it's the right place, or, you know, sometimes, no, it's, it's not the right fit for them. But they're a really great opportunity, just a few that we've been on this year, SUNY Delhi, SUNY Purchase, we've been to SUNY Orange, Universal Technical Institute last year. It just allows students to visualize their, visualize their future, and it's nice, it's kind of fun watching them look at the dorms. Another excellent opportunity for our scholars are our trade schools, so there are a lot of students who want to become plumbers, go into HVAC, but they can still go to college and get the traditional college experience. So, we have a lot of students who are planning to attend Delhi, Morrisville, Rockland, and Lincoln, Lincoln Technical Institute.
Yes, financial aid, money, that we all want to know how our students are, or scholars are going to college. That's my job. I make sure that everyone has the best opportunity to go to school for free. That's, that's what I try to do, and my coworkers try to do inside the office, is to make sure. As you can see, over 350 scholars, that says $2 million, but that's way higher than that now. That was earlier, it's about like $5, $6 million, and that's grants, scholarships that our students have received. So, we're doing really well.
So, we're doing really well with that and our students have opportunities to go to schools that they didn't dream they could go to. You know, so we have students just going to school in, uh, what, South Carolina, uh, Louisiana, California, Florida, Alaska. Actually had a student apply to school in Alaska and then got in, you know, I was like, I don't know why you wanna go there, but... And also Hawaii, you know, so we have our students, you know, going all over the country, you know, actually we had a student last year that went to Shanghai, NYU Shanghai. So, we're doing big things in our office. Upcoming events, uh, we had, uh, College Commitment Day on May, we're gonna have College Commitment Day on May fifteenth, really on May first is the first day, cause that's our National College Commitment Day. So, May first is our first College Commitment Day where all the students wear their paraphernalia from their schools, take pictures, so we're doing that. And then on May fifteen, we're following that up for the students that missed that day, May thirtieth, the college fair. Matter of fact, May twenty-fifth is the college fair, this Friday, right? Tomorrow, tomorrow is the college fair where we have all the students in the high school going from ninth to twelfth grade, they have opportunity to kinda see what schools are out there. So, we try to start our students out off young, you know, to get exposed to colleges and see that there's colleges out there. Um, tentative ceremonies for scholarship. We finally released our MHS scholarships, you know, we, we let them out and the students is just filling them out, filling them out, filling them out. We have about seventy-four, uh, scholarships that we're giving out, this MHS scholarships that we give out, that they use our scholarship applications. So, we're doing well in that department. And then something new that we're doing this summer is a college application workshop. So, we're starting off early, cause August first is the first day that the Common App opens up. So, we wanna make sure we get, get it, get, hit the road running, is that the saying? Hit the road running, right? Yeah, so we're, we're, we're doing that, you know, we have great administrators that put us in the position to kinda be creative, make our choices with controls, of course, but they give us the opportunities. We have a partnership now going on with SUNY Orange, that's happening. We have the Construction Trade Academy that we have students that may not be interested in going to college, they have opportunities to do other things. So, we're doing great things that we wanna continue, continue to do the great things that we're doing in, in college and careers. Questions?
How about Mr. Prino?
Mr. Estrada, uh, how many colleges will be attending your career fair tomorrow? Do you have any idea?
Thirty-six.
That's a good number, yeah. And secondly, uh, do you find that this current year it's more difficult or less difficult to get scholarship money with the...
Um, it's, it hasn't been that difficult yet, so it's, we hope it stays this way, that the scholarship money that's coming in, cause what I noticed is that we've gotten a lot of people that created scholarships too. You know, new scholarships, we have about, about twenty new scholarships that were created and, you know, it's just getting the word out there. You know, this summer, we, we, we had put something, well, we had put something together this summer before we left, before that she left, to kinda get new people in to give out scholarships.
So, that's twenty new scholarships?
Yeah, twenty new scholarships.
Wow, that's a testament for how our community wants to invest in our kids too.
And finally, um, do you find that more or less students are leaning toward the trades, the C-Tech programs, is it about the same or...
We definitely have more that, because they're being exposed to it and that's the reason that they want, they're interested in, they seen other avenues. Like this student came and was like, uh, we talked about construction management and he, he came to me like two days ago and said, I wanna go, I wanna be a construction manager. So, and he, I was like, yeah, that makes about two hundred and fifty thousand. He was like, yeah, I know, you know, so they're definitely doing their research, they're definitely listening and they're definitely being exposed to different avenues other than college.
John, I think one of the, one of the advantages nowadays is that more and more trades are offering to pay for college when folks are employees of trades. So, there's an opportunity for them to get their college paid for that way.
It, it, that's definitely true, because we have the carpenters' union, we just got the plumbers' union. And what was the, the one that just called the other day? That was another carpenter. And New York State is actually doing free apprenticeship programs too. So, we, we have a lot of information that we give out to our students and we, we took the visit to the carpenters' union too. So, there's opportunities that they see.
Oh, I'm sorry, just to, um, add in, along the same, um, kinda track, uh, there's a lot of military branches that also do the same thing, um, and our students, I think, have, have sort of discovered that. We have a lot of students who are, um, going, have committed to the National Guard, um, so they'll be able to, um, you know, do their boot camp and everything this summer and then by next summer, cause National Guard, the commitment is usually one week and a month, so they'll be able to do, um, college next year, um, completely free. Um, and so, again, another thing, a lot of our students, they're being exposed to more information, um, as well as doing their own research. So, um, some, some of our students who know that they wanna go to college, but maybe financially it's not appropriate right now, they know what to do to get there in the future.
Awesome.
Also there, a lot of students, that's also, that didn't do ROTC in high school are going to college for ROTC, cause they see the opportunity to become, to come out as a second lieutenant or whatever, so they taking advantage of that also.
You good, John? Thank you, Mr. Prino, Mr. Rapp.
Yeah, again, um, congratulations on, on the job that you guys are doing. Um, we touched on this before, um, you know, it's one of the things that's big on my list before I came on the school board, wanting to see goal-setting, career guidance, and you guys have taken it to another level. Um, I'm not gonna take up much time, I, I just wanted to talk to you guys more. I have, um, I mentioned it to, um, Ms. Creed and about, I know about two scholarships, two organizations that I'm involved in, and I, we wanna create and contribute a scholarship, so I'll reach out to you guys and we can talk about that.
Twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Rapp.
Thank you.
Ms. Avila.
Um, no questions, but I also wanna thank you guys for the stressful year of senior year, because I think like having going to a place at like, that I know that my questions are gonna be answered was very helpful, especially financial, cause, um, my parents, you know, money's a little tight, you know, I can't, but I really appreciate your guys' hope and like me going to y'all anytime. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Avila.
And Norma's going to school for free.
There we go. I was gonna acknowledge that, but every time we put her face, apparently she's charging us, so... Pastor Williams.
You know, this, this is just really, um, a testimony to, um, to, to the decisions that have been made over the last couple of years. You know, we didn't have this when I was in school, you know, um, Mr. Estrada was probably, was two years behind me, you're eighty-four, eighty-four, Mr. Witt was eighty-four too, um, I'm eighty-two, we didn't have these, we didn't have these opportunities and, um, you know, any college opportunities I had, I had to go out and hunt for my, on my own. And, uh, you know, to see, to see where we've come now, you know, even with my son, you know, my son, um, graduating last year and the opportunity I had, and, um, I'm sure, I'm sure Everton, Everton can testify to this, that, that Aaron really didn't take advantage of all the opportunities and I, and I really, I was about to, oh, I was gonna say, I was gonna punch him in the throat, but I gotta be ca, I gotta be careful, I don't want anybody to think that I abused my son. Um, but, um, Everton can testify to this, that, that Aaron really didn't take advantage of the opportunities, all the opportunities that he had. And so, this is great, the decisions that were made, sometimes people, we, sometimes we make decisions as a board, um, as administration, that sometimes people don't understand, um, but the proof is in the pudding, man. When you, when you really, when you take time to really sit back and allow things to develop and to grow and, uh, you know, the proof is in the pudding. And so, I'm really grateful and thank you, thank you for, for what you're doing, because there was a time when, when, and, and this is not an indictment against anybody, I just, I just feel like, I'm one of those people at sixty years old, I feel like I can say whatever I wanna say, I'm old enough to say it. Um, but, you know, the truth, the truth of the matter is, is that at one point or time, we only, we were only meeting the needs of, of a very top, top percentage. Um, but we've got, what, twenty, twenty, twenty-six hundred, twenty-seven hundred kids in this building? And, and, and if we say every student, every day, we've got to reach, we've got to strive to try, you know, to, to reach all twenty-seven hundred of those kids. And the three of you in that room are doing it. And so, congratulations, um, thank you, thank you for your hard work and, and we're here, we're gonna, we're gonna keep pushing and we're gonna keep pushing and we're gonna keep doing what we gotta do in order to make sure you have the resources to be able to keep, continue, uh, this great work that's impacting our community as a whole, so thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. Mr. Freddie Williams.
Yes, um, once again, this, this checks another box, uh, for Middletown, um, it's not our job as board members to really investigate other districts and see what they're doing as far as college and career. This is the most dynamic college and career team that I've heard of near or far. Um, and just within the last two years, I wanna say, you hear the word college and career a lot more now.
Yeah.
Right? We're hearing it a lot more and I think that means something. Um, once again, having, uh, being a, a father of a Middletown student, I'm super excited seeing stuff like this and hearing stuff like this, um, and it's just, it's just super enlightening that, um, that we're going in this direction and, and that we have, uh, thirty-two colleges, you said, tomorrow?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. I mean, I, I've been here for a little bit and I, I haven't heard those numbers, no shade to anybody that came before this team, I'm just praising this team. Um, so, great job, guys, keep up the good work, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Freddie. Mr. Vice President.
Um, just to piggyback on, uh, basically what everybody's saying, um, I commend you for the job that you're doing, because it is a difficult job at a difficult time in their life.
Being a father of six, maybe two of my kids, just do what they wanted to out of high school, but what y'all are doing is y'all, uh, first of all, y'all creating a, a space where they could feel comfortable and talk. And then y'all are laying out so many options, I hear nothing but good things about what you do. Y'all laying out so many options...
Options that they didn't even think about at all and y'all are showing it to them. And it's, and it's major and they, so they leaving from the experience which you excited and motivated with that light, cause this, this important, like it doesn't, high school is not the end, you know, and y'all are facilitating, okay, we passing that baton, making sure we pass it correctly, so that you go to that next phase of your life. Cause you know, we want, I would use to be successful in life, not just graduate high school, right? And, and y'all are definitely doing the right job and, uh, I wanna commend you on the job that you're doing, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And I'll just echo what everybody else has already said at the table, um, I think it's really important that we continue our expansion, especially to our ENL families, um, uh, coordinating with Ms. Brat's area as, um, when I went through school here, you know, I had two parents who didn't speak English too well and never understood what a faster form was. And since I was the first one in my family to go through the process, it fell upon me to kinda navigate that by myself with not a lot of help from, at the time, there was no college and career area, it was just your guidance counselor and you. And your guidance counselor, you know, had a lot of people that they were worrying about. So, I had to kinda navigate that, um, by myself and making sure that, you know, our ENL families aren't left to the side, because they don't understand the process as much as, um, some others. So, I think it, it's important that we continue to engage, especially in that area.
That area, that area's been picking up too. Just to say, is they're feeling comfortable coming in, cause we have access to translators or their students, I mean, the scholars are translating for them. So, it's, 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 we have them all the time and I, you know, we try to stay after to kinda get them after their jobs are over, so we try to stay for them. So, we seen an uptick in that.
Perfect.
All right, one more thing, um, okay, what kinda grade do you guys give yourselves? No, don't ask that, we're just playing, we already gave y'all a grade, we give, you know, it's right there with A-plus, man, great work that y'all doing.
Thank you so much.
We just have a little treat for y'all, just, uh, you know, something that we created for college and careers. I mean, some, some, some of y'all already heard it, but, you know, Norma was right there when we were making it. And she's probably gonna charge us for saying her name, her name. Yo, it's Middletown High, where we aim for the skies, college and careers, watch us watch no surprise, walking through these halls, dreams in our eyes. Build a future by the grit, watch us organize, we got the tools, we got the plan, we set the stage, my common ass the job is turning every page. Financial aid, workshop, no fear, we engage, scholarships and grants, trying to get the big stage. We on the path to success, no stopping us now, college and careers, we gonna show you how, dream big, work hard, yeah, we wear the crown, Middletown's the place where futures are found. We take trips to colleges, step on the ground, see the dorms, hear the stories, yeah, we future bound, got a council of guiding, yeah, they holding us down, from the fashions to the essays, yeah, we wearing the gown, inner shifts and jobs, yeah, we opening doors, scoring every field brick and barriers and more, from business to science, tech to the arts, Middletown High, where every dream starts. We on the path to success, no stopping us now, college and careers, we gonna show you how, dream big, work hard, yeah, we wear the crown, Middletown's the place where futures are found. We seen steward and shine, heard our success stories, turning dreams into plans, stepping in the glory, families united, making futures bright, college and career, office we ignite, so take that first step, don't hold back, we're here to pave the way, keep you on track, the future's calling, Middletown's the base, we're hustling hard, yeah, you'll find your place. We on the path to success, no stopping us. Listen, this is what we're doing, we're building futures in college and careers, we're building futures, all right?
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much. That's awesome. I'm telling you, we got a lot of entertainment for our, our families when they're sitting in the bleachers in the hot sun in June for the graduation. Uh, next up... Next up, our gr, our graduation plans for June twenty twenty-five, exciting information.
Yes, unfortunately, we do not have a rap or a, um, tear-jerking video to show you guys, um, but, uh, you know, we are at the end, as is graduation, so we're gonna, um, just kinda give you guys a little bit of a quick overview of what we have to celebrate our senior legacy makers, uh, in the coming weeks, as well as to go over the graduation ceremony and I believe we all know each other, Carrie Luba, Jenny Linda Toward, the senior class advisor, so thank you so much for having us here this evening.
So, uh, to stay informed on all of our graduation festivities and all of our end-of-year activities, uh, we have our Google Classroom code for our senior class, uh, we've been working closely with Mr. Witt and Technology and, uh, we have a graduation information tab. tab going on our website, district website, as well as you can see updates on the Facebook We saw Ms. Glickman earlier talking about prom, so May 16th, 2025, run by the junior class. We have our yearbook contact information, as well as myself and Ms. Lubah's contact information and where the students can find us. No, yeah, go ahead.
So just a little overview of some of the celebrations. Just today, this afternoon, we had our senior tie dye event where seniors had purchased white shirts and we tie dyed them midi blue today. A lot of fun, kids really, were really excited to tie dye, went home with directions to make sure that they don't wash it out. And it was just a really nice event, beautiful day for it. We have our senior field day coming up Monday, June 9th. More information to follow on that, some competitive games, little throwback to elementary school style with some potato sack races and tug of war. That's gonna be a really great day for our seniors. Next week, this information has been out for a little bit, we have our senior sunset and chalk a spot where the seniors are able to leave their mark in the parking lot by decorating their spots. And we also then go up to the upper field and watch the sunset on their senior year. And again, all this information is available on the Google Classroom and has also been pushed out on Facebook. We continue with our legacy making. In recent years, we now have opened up and let the seniors vote for their commencement address. This is open to all graduating seniors in June. They are able to write a speech to be submitted and then voted on by their peers. So this information has also gone out, and speeches can be typed manuscripts are to be emailed to me by May 5th, 11:59 PM. And it's a really great way to get the seniors' voice at their commencement address. Cap and gown, we will be distributing caps and gowns. Every senior will get a blue cap, a blue gown, and a 2025 tassel. They are able to decorate their caps, again, leaving their mark. And this distribution will take place on June 12th, following a mandatory graduation meeting. So we have all that organized and set up and distributed alphabetically.
And don't iron your gowns.
Yes, do not iron your gown, yes. Steam it, they can hang it in the bathroom and, you know, run the shower hop, but do not iron it. We've had mishaps with that. Graduation rehearsal and celebration, so Thursday, the day before graduation, June 26th, a big day for our seniors. Beginning at 9:00 AM, they have their elementary senior walk of fame. Information has gone out as well, the cohort, with the help from the cohort office, we've emailed all of the seniors, we've posted in the morning announcements. The seniors have the option, opportunity to sign up to pick their top two elementary schools that they would like to go. The, the elementary students get really excited, scholars are all dressed up, they make signs for our seniors, and they walk through and parade in their cap and gowns, showing our future legacy makers exactly what they can look forward to. At 11:00, they come back to the high school, and we have our farewell brunch with staff and members of the Middletown community, and all of you, of course. At 12 o'clock, we have our rehearsal, we actually go into the stadium and run through the entire ceremony to help the seniors calm some of those nerves. And then at 1:30 following that, they will get their graduation tickets. So they do need to be in attendance that day physically to get their graduation tickets for the ceremony the next day. Okay? And then this is just a little bit more information, everything that I went through, they will sign up, and permission slips are required for this event because they will be boarding buses to go to the elementary schools. Brunch, mandatory rehearsal, again, just kind of going through that. Ticket distribution, every graduate will receive four tickets. One of the amazing things, we have such a large graduating class, it's great for us, we're really making wonderful strides and, but we do have to limit the tickets, so it is four tickets. Anyone over the age of two will need a ticket, seniors have been made aware of this information since September. And there are no additional tickets available for purchase, and you must present your ticket to enter the ceremony. Diplomas will be distributed following the ceremony. We introduced this last year, it went wonderfully, we received a lot of positive feedback, so immediately following the ceremony, seniors can go with their, their parent or guardian, and they can go up to the gym. And again, we have it all set up, it's for ease of distribution, they can get their diplomas and they're ready to go. And we'll have a lot of, as well, step in repeats and photo opportunities throughout the campus as well. So if they're waiting, they can go and take some great photos following the graduation ceremony. Graduation is a Friday, June 27th, talked about it already, gates open at 8:30 AM. All guests will go through a security checkpoint, so that is why we are opening the gates early, and we do encourage people to get here early. The ceremony will begin promptly at 10:00 AM, and our graduates must arrive by 9:00 AM for lineup. Just a couple of things, you know, better to know information ahead of time, items prohibited from the venue, bags, no bags of any kind, backpacks, purses, I think they're called belt bags now, any bags are not allowed, target shopping bags, et cetera, et cetera. Outside food, again, all the bags are listed there, no weapons of any kind, camera bags, cases, briefcases, balloons, inflatable balls, signs, noisemakers, all of these items are prohibited because we do not want to take away from our graduates and this wonderful accomplishment. Guests, again, are, must go through a security checkpoint, we encourage guests to have their keys, wallets, and phones out, pretend you're going through the airport security line, have it all ready to expedite the process. You can have compact umbrellas, we're not gonna need them this year because it's gonna be beautiful, perfect, and sunny.
It sure is.
But in case, you know, you really need your umbrella, under 12 inches, when compact. And again, these are just some frequently asked questions, I have gone over most of this, but this is just all there in a nice area for everyone, if you want to look through. Parking is very important, there will be very limited parking available at Middletown High School. We, parking is on a first come, first served basis. We, of course, have reserved parking for individuals with special needs who hold a valid handicapped permit. Once the parking lot is filled, it will close, or we will close it at 9:00 AM. And we will have overflow parking available, as well as shuttle transportation, so don't worry if you're in any of those overflow lots, we will be working with Mid City to transport you to the campus. And you must have a graduation ticket in order to board that shuttle. And this is just a recap of everything, and this infographic will be available on our graduation section of the website, Facebook, you will be seeing this a lot, we'll be continuously pushing this out over the next couple of weeks. And as Ms. Natal said, the official communication will be the senior class Google Classroom, the Middletown City School District website, with the soon to be dropped graduation section, as well as the Facebook page. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Nice job. Any questions regarding graduation, Mr. Moore? No, Mr. Perino?
Very comprehensive report, thank you. Ed, you mentioned that material might be shown on Channel 20, maybe this, if we could...
Oh, yeah, that's the, the first thing I said is, I think, I think Mr. Donahue found his entrance video to the, before the class marches end.
And everything will be translated as well, we are, they're all in process.
Mr. Rett.
I think you guys covered everything. Moving forward.
Senior, Ms. Avila.
No questions, but I didn't realize how close those dates are. Like, panicking, I'm ready, but, eh, like, it's, it's real close.
Thank you Pastor Williams.
I want a song.
You don't want a song from me, I can promise you that.
Mr. Freddie Williams.
Good job, good job.
No questions, this is kind of a, great job, I know it's a heavy lift, so many, what's the graduating class this year, the number?
Oh.
About, around about-ish?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Six?
Six hundred.
Yeah, that's big.
Yeah.
That's big.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, that says a lot about our district and, and what we're doing here, so great job guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice President, your last graduation.
Excellent presentation, excellent job.
Thank you.
The only question I have, and I don't remember if it's something that we've done in the past, just, because usually we're inside the school when it's happening, but is, does Gardner, the entrance on Gardner, is it closed there? We're only allowing parking entrance through Carpenter?
That would be...
Do we have the gates closed on the bottom? I don't remember.
Is it our parking lot?
Yeah, the parking lot at the high school, the entrance for people until it gets full is off of Carpenter, not Gardner, correct? Gardner's closed off?
Correct.
Okay.
And we do have a, of maps that go out closer to the ceremony, we have really, they're, they're quite phenomenal, they're like, have all the arrows, they're overview and everything that goes out to the public in the couple of, the week or two beforehand.
And just, you know, I think maybe if we can include in, in all our messages outside, just a disclosure out of respect for neighbors, please make sure not to park in front of driveways and fire hydrants, like, something general to include in that for them. So, thank you very much, that was awesome, thanks.
Thank you, thanks for having us.
We'll move on to our student board member report, Ms. Avila.
No, nothing as much, same as usual, everyone with their, oop, everyone with their midi pride. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're gonna move on, at this time, we'll let the board have their say that we skipped over our board member community updates, so this will be your four minutes for our board member community updates. At this time, we'll start off with Mr. Moore.
All right, cool. I'll be pretty quick. As a current liaison for Mahay Middle School with Mr. Freddie Williams, just got a quick little update. This week, Mahay Middle School has a, no, sorry, I went to the wrong one, sorry. One second. Clicked on the wrong one. Yeah, so this week, as you know, the students had the NICE app testing for E L, E L, E, E L A, sorry. And next week, May 5th through May 8th, the eighth graders will be participating in the state science test. And then on Friday, May 16th, 7:00 AM at the gym, they'll be celebrating the breakfast of readers for 30 scholars and their families, they're invited, recognized, they're scholars as winners for the book talk challenge raffle. And that's pretty much it for right now, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Perino?
Thank you, President Shott, anything I have can wait, it's getting late, and I can wait to the next meeting, thank you.
You sure? Thank you, Mr. Perino. Mr. Rett?
Nothing much, just two reminders, tomorrow, we have the multicultural, multicultural event here at the school, the main gymnasium, between 5:00 and 8:00. So, great time to get out and just fellowship and interact with other people, other cultures, food, drinks, music, and have a good time. Yep. Thank you, Mr. Rett. Ms. Avila?
Ooh, not a lot, I do know that tomorrow, the flag team does have a game starting at 4:30. It doesn't matter if you choose diversity or us, you know, you're showing your midi spirit. Also, like, a reminder for, like, all sports teams, this is a flag football slogan that we have, which is PAW, standing for passionate about winning. And I think the flag team is really doing that right now with the record of 5-0, right now with our, this is our third year with this, so we're going good. Also, yeah, we had a game yesterday, and it was like an outstanding blowout, 57-0 against Warwick. I know, I know. Yeah, that was, it was a, it was a, it was a good game, it was a good game. And yeah, everyone show your midi pride, don't forget about that.
That was awesome, thank you. Pastor Williams?
I don't have much on the community side. Mr. Rett already made the announcement, we're both the liaisons here at the, at the high school. He already made the announcement about the multicultural night, but I'll add to this, this is something that's been going on for the last couple of years, and, and the night is really big, so there's a lot of good things that's going on, as well as, you know, and, and just to, to, to add some emphasis to the fact that the food that they're gonna have is gonna be absolutely amazing, coming from different cultural backgrounds. So, you know, come out, come out, everybody, tomorrow, there's a lot of things going on tomorrow with the college, the college fair and, and the multicultural night, so come out on a Friday at the end of the, end of the week, and let's, let's be one Middletown, as, as Mr. Williams always likes to say.
Thank you Pastor Williams. Mr. Freddie Williams?
I'll be quick, I think I have one image. This is coming up, this is this Saturday, Passion Over Position Organization is doing a flag football event here at the high school. And also, off the tail end of the college and career, this organization will be giving a scholarship towards a Middletown senior. So it's gonna be a great event, multiple ages from, I believe from our elementary all the way through high school, I know some, some varsity kids are gonna be in JV, modified level, and even elementary, even before you can really play any contact sports, so this is gonna be a good event put on, I'm gonna put my volunteer vest on and get out there and, you know, get some pictures and stuff like that. So, great event, great organization. So, yeah, this is this Saturday, weather's looking, you know, but rain or shine, the kids are resilient, unless you, unless it's my son, and he doesn't like the colder rain, so he tries to hide out, but it should be a good event, so that's this Saturday, starting at 8:00 AM here at the high school. So that's what I have, thank you.
I was gonna ask where it was, because I don't think it says it on there where it's...
Oh, so they, it's gonna, I'm sorry, it's gonna start the upper back fields, because there's a lacrosse game that happens, upper back fields from about 8:00 to 12:00, and then there will be a shift down to turf one, which is the main field, from about 1:00 on. There shouldn't be much longer from, when it starts at 1:00, I don't think there'll be much left to play, but, you know, the kids will get a kick out of that, being on the turf, so, yeah, upper fi, upper, I've never even been at the upper field, but, but it's tennis courts, I believe, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and then it's gonna shift down to the main field at around 12:30, 1:00 o'clock, after the lacrosse game.
Real, real quick, also, also, Saturday is, is citywide cleanup day. And so, you know, I, I don't know, I don't know if there's any, I don't know if there's any, you know, rain dates or anything behind that, but that's, that's the plan, so it's citywide cleanup, so a lot of our, a lot of our groups are gonna be out there, be partaking in the citywide cleanup to make sure that we...
Dr. Johnson, do you know if there's a makeup day at all?
There's not been determined.
Okay, because I do hear that it's gonna rain...
There's not been a good day.
Yeah, it might significantly rain on Saturday, is my understanding, but, so keep a, take a look at the city website if there are any changes to that date, if they decide to do anything because of weather. Thank you Pastor Williams. Vice President Williams?
I have nothing, everyone have a great evening.
Thank you, and I will see everybody at multicultural night tomorrow, starting at 5:00 o'clock, right here at the gym over at the high school as well. And I know, I'm just gonna, as a reminder, because our next board meeting is, I think, May 7?
July 8.
May 8th, on a Thursday, so before May 8th, we do have that candidates, meet the candidates, sponsored by the Board of Education, right here on Monday. Do we know the time again? I forgot. 7:00 o'clock, right here at the media center to meet our school board candidates, Monday, May 5th. Thank you for reminding me about that. Are there any other Board of Education committee reports that we need to know about? I think we're good on audit, right? On everything else?
Ed?
Yes, Sean?
We had a facilities committee meeting and safety and security, but I can take care of that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, well, good.
Much obliged.
Yeah, we had a policy meeting, it was looking at improving vendor management, data security, and privacy practices, you know, for the school district, as well as for the students, so, but we can talk about that at another time, yeah.
Cool. Thank you, Mr. Rett. All right, thank you, everybody, I'll, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mr. Rett. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero, seven zero. I want to thank everybody for joining us, and we'll see you all on Thursday, May 8th.
I gotta get after that John Williams, he's been eloping.